Walter, before you start, can I say something to your team? I just came back in from annual conference over in Huntsville, United Methodist. One thing that I came away with today is that, you know, Jesus had a tremendous relationship with the Father, but he still thought it was important to pray.
And I'm thankful that this group actually does that. We've been doing that now for over twenty years. Oh, God's blessings. Probably do thank you, Lord, for those comments that we heard. We just thank you that this group honors you. We know, Lord, that this city is blessed because we do honor you. We pray, Lord, that these gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, that sit in these seats to come will always acknowledge you and that you will always have the handle of the city. Thank you for the opportunity you've given us. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Place the flag, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, all, for being here. We'll call the meeting order with all members present. Everybody have a chance to look over the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion from Red, second from Walter, that we approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Orders of the officers. Tim?
The LED light project is ongoing, but it's slowed down since the weather changed. We've got about twelve hundred and fifty up so far. The oil craft pump station, the only thing we have left is planting grass. It'll be completely finished. The sewer rehab, we're still working on it. We're doing a lot of the manos in the northeast area, and probably within the month, we'll be getting ready to start on the rest of that. Got the paving list ready as far as I know right now. The amount of money, we're not exactly sure what we're gonna have right now. It may be a little more than what's on the list, but if y'all got other streets to add, we can just take it off of Houston Loop. That's the longest one, so we can just pave a little less section a bit and fit it in if y'all got some more to add to it. Jessica thinks we may have enough money for what's on the list right now. So if there is any more to add, we'll just subtract off of Houston Loop. That's all I got. Thank you.
Greg?
Splash pad update, and I didn't know if we really want to talk about that at this time, or if we need to have a work session, or what are y'all's thoughts? I don't think we're all on the same page about the direction and what we want to do about...
I think we're still in the kind of information ops and gathering phase right now, and I think that we talked about, maybe within a couple of days, once some information starts coming in, we'll try to call a work session together, let the committee meet or something, and try to figure out exactly what's best to pass this table.
I've got some information already. I've got more information on the way also on different surfacing that we can look at as options. I stopped by Scottsboro on the way back from Huntsville today, looked at what they had over there. It's pretty good. I don't know how durable it's gonna be, but anyhow.
Well, I sent y'all the information on the dry deck and some other information, the guy at MacGyver that they used at Scottsboro.
Yes.
So I've sent y'all several emails. I just didn't know if you had an opportunity to look at any of that. I mean, I know it's kind of late notice.
Got a couple of, also got a couple of quotes coming from, gain time, from the surfacing department down there that may be more cost effective. We're trying to gather some information on the surface itself, try and see how it compares to some of these others, but it's definitely less expensive than what we're talking about on the other one, so.
I went by Geraldine and also Scottsboro today. Geraldine's is pretty close to what we've done. It's, it might be just a hair rougher than us, but no, no, but Scottsboro, of course, you saw we had it, so if it laced, it'd be a good coat.
It's been on there three years, and it's already starting to fade and get thin in some places, so, you know, we're just, you know, we're just gonna have to kind of weigh all odds once we got some information. One thing we did talk about doing was, was as we gather information, whoever gathers that information, we want to channel that back through the rec department, through the rec committee, so that we can look at all the options and bring some sort of recommendations to the full council at that time. And that's on surfacing. We do have, you know, some other things that we need to address that are going on down there. You know, we did have someone contact me and said that there were kids putting dish soap, squirting dish soap on the thing so that they could slide across it easier. So, you know, I think it's key, gonna be key, to get somebody down there, like we had discussed, maybe doing some concessions and overseeing the rules and that type of stuff first, or have that in place before we even consider doing anything else. So I think if we can get somebody down there enforcing those rules, we might see a drastic decrease in the problems we're having.
Now, Scottsboro covers theirs. They were out. They've got to...
Two to three people.
Life guards.
Kind of, yes.
They're not certified by life guards.
Well, she told, that's what she told me.
She told me they were not. Maybe she could've been talking about just the ones who were there at that time, but they're not all certified by life guards.
Our main focus is, is like we said, we had to shut it down because it was, we thought maybe there were some things we could do to make it a little bit safer, so hopefully we can get a thing. I don't know if we can do it in two weeks or not, but that kind of give us a, let's put our stuff on the timeline so we can monitor it so we can get it back open. I happened to be down there, and two little kids came up ready to play, you know, their heart was broken because it wouldn't open. But safety is important, so we'll continue looking for those ways. Maybe we can get it back online in a couple of weeks, Tom, whatever it takes to make it safe.
We did get the no run, and Buck got the, well, he's here tonight, but he did get the no run, and stencils down on three sides, all except for where it was wet.
I talked to him over at Scottsboro about that too, and they have the same issue. It's not as bad as if they do have attendance, they don't have the issues because they got folks there that will sit them out. If, you know, if they're running and then they don't correct the issue and they start running again, they sit them out for ten minutes, fifteen minutes, whatever it is, and that gets their attention real quick, so.
So we'll just leave it closed until we can all get it get open.
Yeah.
The soda golf course, the splash pad, the concrete's been poured, so if you get an opportunity to go by there and take a look at that.
Don't put any paint on it.
Pardon?
Don't put any paint on it.
The swimming pool update, things are going well at the city pool, and they're having a tremendous crowd at the soda golf course, sports complex update. We had the twelve hundred NSA State Girls Fastpitch Tournament this past weekend. There were nineteen teams, really good tournament. Chris is doing an outstanding job. We have eleven or twelve big huge baseball district tournament, the June seventeenth to the twenty-third, that'll be another good tournament. We hosted the four-point high school baseball camp last week. We hosted the high school basketball camp last week. We need to talk about the Wallace Avenue Gym and the Sawyer Field lease. I have emailed each of you a copy of what we want to do, and Coach Foster's actually here tonight, if you need...
I think we've got that in you business, Greg, in only...
I'll have a copy of it. Okay, all right. I'll move on. Rate one software agreement. I sent each of you that. The committee recommended that we go ahead and proceed with that, so I didn't know if we needed a motion or authorize the mayor or who to enter into that agreement with them. Brandt's here, in case anybody has any questions about the software. He has contacted a lot of the people that use that existing program, so just wanted to, we talked about that at the committee meeting on May the nineteenth.
Yeah, I think we're ready to move ahead with that, with that change to that system, whatever we need to do to put that in place.
Well, apparently out of best state, but I don't, and I wasn't at the committee meeting, so I don't have a clue what you're talking about.
Well, we've been working on trying to get a new membership software package at the rec center for about six months, and it's desperately needed, and like I said, Brandt has been working on that for over six months, and Ronnie was working on it before that, so it's something that we desperately need, and I was hoping that we'd get the intertuned agreement. I mean, it doesn't have to be denied, but I can email you all the information, and we can look at it in two weeks, but...
Greg, just briefly summarize what it does.
Brandt's the one that has dealt with that whole thing.
Would you fill us in, Brandt, please?
It's actually a software that we'll be able to use throughout the whole rec center once we get it up and going. We can even use it all the way to our concession stands and all that, but it's gonna keep up with all our information, all of our deadlines. Right now, we've got roughly twelve hundred members. We're kind of having a hand, keep up with when you expire your expiration date, things like that. We don't have any kind of program. This will do all that once we get all the information in it. It'll let us know when everybody's gonna expire, when they need to be renewed, all that. It also has POS in it, so we can have a front register on it, so we can kind of keep up with the register. I, you sold this much stuff, this is what the computer says, this is what cash would have, things like that.
Credit card, people will be able to look at all their information online. Jessica could pull up from her computer, look at all the information, get any kind of detailed report that she would need.
It's web-based software.
I guess it's something the committee's already met with, that y'all making a recommendation that we, what's the cost on it?
There's an initial two hundred and fifty dollar charge for our credit, our card machine, like members, their cards on their members. Then the only fee is gonna be a one percent on all transactions.
As opposed to three on most of the others that we researched?
All transactions or credit card transactions?
It'll be all, well, when we put this in, we'll also take debit credit, which we do, we do not take right now. So all of our transactions, that charge is one percent.
It doesn't matter what kind of payment method, right? It's irrespective of the method of payment?
Yeah.
Right.
Well, I don't have a problem with it. I just, I just didn't have that in my...
What would the cost be on a yearly basis?
What we're doing here is we're on one forty to one hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, so you're looking at probably in between fourteen and eighteen hundred dollars a year.
That's pretty cheap.
Worth that.
At two hundred and fifty dollars, that switch over.
Yes.
And they will have one person that will handle our account, so every time we call, that's the one person that we will deal with.
I don't have a problem with it. Very thoughtful.
Yeah, I make motion, and we proceed with the software.
Got a motion from Randall and a second from...
Charlie.
Charlie. All those in favor?
Aye. But thank you, Greg, God is aware of us.
I apologize for not getting that to you in an email. Four-Pane Independence Day celebration will be on Friday, July the first, and Maury's got the entertainment lined up, and Mike's working on the vendors already, and I was gonna let Mike kind of give you an update on the Christmas tree in the park and an update, we're getting questions and calls about the fountain in City Park and the water for the hanging baskets.
First thing on Independence Day, y'all would, they would, post my number, my phone number, if anybody local, but then people that are interested, give me a call, because I don't want to miss out on any of our local people. I've already talked to Jay Bird, and Talking Buds, and Get Those Guys, and Bobby Mack, but there may be a couple more people at Four-Pane, which at first I'll reach out to you a few other things. Talk to the guy, it rains what it does, the blowups, the inflatable stuff. I talked to him at the race the other morning, and he's gonna get with me on that, and I'll get Chris, his complex, and we'll, because I'll need, it's getting close, I'll need to know what kind of power, if we're gonna have to have power and other things along that line. On the tree in the park, I looked at it real close today. Personally, I, and I'm not giving the tree much of a chance. It's starting to die from the inside out, and you look at it, get down and look at it real close, you look up the tree base, everything is dying from the inside coming out. That's why you still see some green there on the outside, but everything on the inside of that tree is dead, it's currently dead. And we've been running water on that thing constantly, I don't know, there's been now for at least the last, I won't even turn it off, and it's simply, it's got a trickle on it. I don't think it's caused a lack of water. I don't know. But it's, I don't get much chance to make it. And since Tony's here, Tony can, Tony them are really, I mean, they're doing a lot, and I know they're overwhelmed and everything else. He can give you more about the fountain, about any of, in the paint.
Yeah, I just got, I just talked with Tim yesterday, we got, one of his guys got to spray it, but I didn't have time to go get paint today, and she's coming to bar with them to get the paint, and one of them guys is gonna help us kind of spray it, because with the tractor implement paint, what it is, like, it's real hard to paint, and she'll come in and touch up with her paint on top of that to make the, maybe to have a real good base coat, and all that, do it after she gets done, it's clear, and then it's done, so. So we're just gonna try to get started tomorrow. You know, I gotta get the paint tomorrow, so.
And I think the issue was everybody's gonna vandalize it, is that correct?
Yeah, well, after Tony and them got through, and after the sand blasted, we had somebody climb over the fence and start the pedals down and breaking, and Tony and them had to go back down and re-weld them and get them back to, you know, but that's just, I mean, we constantly have vandalism of all kinds, of different shapes and sizes in our parks, you know, and it's, it's just something that happens.
We've already got the fence painted, and the fence is done.
And as far as the hanging baskets go, like I said, Buck and them's doing the best they can, they're on the theater job down there now, they've been on the splash pad, they've been working on the water source. I can't get the hanging baskets done and put up until we have the water source, so I don't, I can't really give you when, when that might happen, whenever they get a chance.
I would be coming on that, Buck.
Well, we've got, we've got a bunch done, there's a bunch working, I believe, when we had our...
How far we get?
We had our dates set to start the theater, I started the end, so I had to pull off of that, that's where I landed. I mean, we probably might get it up going a couple days.
Yeah. There's something else we've got to look at, too. Greg, we need to get the dining, myself, building, and grounds.
Did you get my email? I sent both y'all the lease with the ten things that I had in place for Coach Foster.
We need to look at, whenever thing can get loose, or we can look at, just say what we're looking at. We got them pretty well.
Yeah, for sure.
The grounds are right now.
One thing, one listed is, the units have been ordered for about a week now, the dog park stations, they've come from Illinois, I believe, and I look for them to come in at any time, and then once they come in, we can handle that, and we'll get down there and we'll get those things set.
That's all I have.
Chief?
We've got two in the police academy where we're not able to get them into the Jacksonville Police Academy because they were already full of sweat, and then I've sent them down the road to sell them, but that's no big deal. They're about fourth week of getting, well, thirteen weeks of training, but that's gonna help us out some. We're currently interviewing a couple, two or three more, trying to get some more physicians filled. Other than that, as business as usual, we had a pedestrian versus vehicle accident last night, the result didn't tell, our guys investigating that, doesn't appear to be anything, just really an accident, so that's about it for us.
One time we talked earlier about, you guys have some of those movable cameras that you can move, the surveillance cameras and stuff. Talk about some of this vandalism, is there something we can do? You know, we talked about maybe increasing some of the security, maybe moving some of those around where you never really know where they are.
To be honest with you, the City of Fort Wayne needs to invest in a camera system where we can do that and monitor from different places, because the thing that we have, you basically have to put it up, record with it, go pull a card out of it, and go back and look at it, so, you know, that's time consuming, we have to borrow something to get up and lift it up and get that thing put in place on some of the, like, V cam, D cams and stuff like that. We could use a good city-wide surveillance system on some of our parks, going into the bathrooms and stuff like that, entrances and exits and stuff. Might be such, yeah, I wanted to consider, you know, bringing up the splash pad and that for me. I think Eric could probably put something together that would not be astronomical where anybody, any of us could kind of pull it up and look and see what's going on at any time.
Could you maybe have him put something together on that, see what kind of money, ballpark we're talking about?
Real time.
Put it in his next budget.
Yeah.
So we need to get Eric to look at it, take it.
Yeah. A lot of cities have that now, you know, they do it on their intersections, the sidewalks, and kind of see what's going on, and it's not necessarily just for police, but a lot of people use it for tourism, so.
Would you monitor, clean nine-one-one?
You could monitor anywhere, it can be recorded anytime there's movement, but you could pull it up, you can pull it up here, the IP address, and I can anybody, so.
I was thinking, you know, when somebody's doing it, if nine-one-one sees it, they send somebody...
I'm not gonna say somebody in nine-one-one, if you get a mercy call, they, they have a little monitor, so it becomes tough to monitor, pull down.
That's a lot for you.
I'm trying to go back to catch who did something.
Tim, that's a web-based, uh...
We were able to make a couple arrests last year of somebody vandalizing the, uh...
The line?
The, uh, the raccoons at the park, because southern properties had a camera outside. We got them coming across their parking lot, so it worked out real well.
We need them on splash pad for being the park, up and down through town, where you, you know, not like you, it's real time, and you put it on your website, people can see what's going on. See when you have cars, who, when they, and all that works.
We just recently visited the City of Scottsboro and City Hall. They have a system similar to this, so you might want to give them a call, so.
I'll get, with Eric, we'll try to come up with something, maybe even come up with some processes, that's his line of work, so.
I like that very cool idea, period. I think it's very cool.
That system there is eighteen hundred dollars, Eric ordered it out, and that old, old sixteen cameras.
Andy, have we received delivery of all our vehicles?
Yes, we did get them all in there, done through right down here in Fort Wayne, and we're in the process of getting that stuff done.
Okay, chief?
As I reported in the past couple of meetings, I've been shorthanded. I got one guy started this week. I offered employment to one yesterday, when he feels his pre-employment issues, should put him to work a couple of weeks, and that should bring me back to level stat. I'll have three and, I don't know, two in recruits school come September. That should be everybody trained as well, up to certification standard. Update on the new engines. I got word today from Suck and Fire, the new engines are gonna be delivered on the date contracted, probably. They've fallen behind, June's not gonna happen, which I knew that was probably gonna be the case, so I talked to them today, and I said, well, we're just gonna expect them the day that it's, they're supposed to be, which is the twenty-ninth of July. There's only one that's guaranteed contractually to be here on the twenty-ninth. The other one, they can't guarantee it because one's tied up to the grant, they had to specify that one to be here on a certain date, but they assure me that, you know, if they don't come together the twenty-ninth, just be a couple, you know, a couple, four days, maybe three or four days, past the twenty-ninth, we'll have the other. They're still shooting for both of them to be here, the twenty-ninth or before that week in July. I've, all the contracts for fireworks on the Fourth of July, they've been signed by the mayor, sent back to the company we're dealing with, all the permits have been obtained, permission letters, we're good to go there. Everything we need on our end has been fulfilled for the Fourth of July fireworks show. The last thing is the EMA, I assume I'm their go-to guy. They've requested that they have a meeting with myself, the mayor, Randy, and Tim, simply us and y'all as well, if you want to be there. They would prefer you there, but they need to talk to us about the EOP plan, Mercy Operations Plan. It's time to renew that again with the county, and the EMA director wants to go over some stuff, make y'all aware of it as much as make us aware of it, and then I think at a date in the future, you know, that'll come back in this, in a meeting, and you'll have to sign off on it. So he wanted you to know upfront what would be expected of the city and the council, and he would like to do that. He gave me a couple of dates, he said it takes about an hour to do, and I talked to the mayor about it. July the fifth looks good for us, but that's also the day of qualifying. I don't know if he wanted to get into that. The other dates he threw out, the EMA could meet with us, was any date, June twenty through twenty-five, or July five through eight, just want to pick one of those days. And it doesn't have to be an official work session, but I know when all of you come together has to be advertised. As many of you want to come can come, and if you don't want to come, you wouldn't have to, but he has requested that, you and Tim and the mayor be there, so. Didn't talk to the mayor about it, he requested that I put it before you and let y'all decide what dates you want to do.
Randy, Eddie would need to be involved with that also.
Just pay like an afternoon meeting or during the day, or...
I would prefer it be an afternoon.
How long a meeting would you have with that?
He said less than an hour, so, for what he needs to tell us. And then I'll have to go to a meeting on the twenty-eighth of July at the County Commission, and then the information that they decide there, I assume would be to ratify the contract or the agreement, and that would come back to you to, um...
I'd say you guys just pick a, pick a day, and then we'll just try to work it.
Yep.
Well, we have a council meeting on the twenty-first, at what, we have a council meeting on the twenty-first.
July.
Do it.
June.
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 Yeah, June.
June.
Uh, we could, we could do that right for the council.
Is that one of the dates that he had?
Twenty-one, twenty-one would work for him. June twenty-one, five o'clock.
Right.
All right, I forward that on to him tomorrow. That's all I have.
Thank you, chief. Okay, on to business. Next is tax abatements to Task Code Industries. Are you gonna address the council? Okay.
Just say thank you for goodness gracious, we do submit your consideration, an abatement, an application for abatement of taxes for non-educational sales and use and non-educational property tax abatements for a new company that's coming to Fort Wayne. The name of the company is Task Code Industries, and they will be located in an existing building at seventy O H at Wood Avenue, and the product they make, what they manufacturing is a low-density polyethylene foam product, that the amount of their investment that they're asking for consideration of the abatement of non-educational taxes is one hundred thousand dollars. And initially, they will employ one employee and increase that, you're going five employees, and then your two, they'll add an additional ten, and your three, they'll add an additional five employees, for a total of ten employees.
Any discussion?
Y'all asked in times past what it means to the city for the amount of bait. Two thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty cents total were taken.
What it would amount to the city.
Yeah, that's what the city would, that, that dollar amounts, what we would not give in tax, in our sales tax and property tax. Two thousand, two hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty cents.
This is producing foam?
I love this city foam, it's a protective packaging.
I think it's something like that sheet of foam you see that comes and rolls back in boxes.
It's a, it's a clean cavity, I mean, that every, you have a lot of runoff of contaminant debris.
Yes, sir.
I understand that this is a wrapping foam that's used in packaging and what have you.
I hope that's approved.
It's going to be an extraordinary process.
All right, we have a motion from Red and a second from Randall. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any in favor? Mike, please.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Second reading of the ordinance, rezoning twenty acres of thirty-eight oh one, Green Hill Boulevard Northwest from C four to R L.
We may not read it.
No objection to that, um...
This is to allow residential...
That's correct.
...out of it.
Certainly.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Continued business is the discussion about the sidewalk project located in the South Y area, that we found out we could not use the, uh...
I have, you know, that was the grant that we received, which would require a hundred thousand dollars mansion, now the city plus fifty thousand dollars within engineering fees, which would be about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. We cannot do any work on that project. It's federal money, they won't let us do anything. They did reluctantly agree to let us use the forced labor account, which we could kind of act as our own contract, but there's lots of rules involved in that, too. I had rather see us take that hundred fifty thousand dollars and spend it somewhere else than I'd be. The original plan, when we came up with this, was to build a sidewalk along the creek and go out the old railroad bed and, you know, make a scenic walk. Can't get any easements for that. and go out the old railroad bed and, you know, make a scenic walk. Can't get any easements for that, you know, so... That's my recommendations.
I, I agree. I'd, I'd rather see us, you, we're gonna spend a hundred fifty thousand dollars on sidewalk to rehab somewhere existing.
Existing sidewalk.
I've walked down here in town and spent a hundred fifty thousand on that.
And there's some places that we need some additional sidewalks.
There is, and there is some sidewalks that need to be repaired.
But I don't wanna see us just say, well, we, we didn't spend that hundred fifty thousand dollars. I'd like to see us spend that hundred fifty thousand dollars on something that's good for us.
We, uh, we, we may need to take a closer look at these grants when we apply for them. If it's possible, figure out what the fine grant is.
Well, we went up this grant.
We were told during the whole process that that was allowed.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It turned out not to be true.
Well, I, I talked to everybody. I finally called John Cooper and he said, I said, I wanna hear it from horse's mouth. He said, well, that's strapped, you know, and you got to... And he said it's quite a few people turning down those type of grants.
Well...
I'm like motion reject grant.
I'm sorry.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Okay, discussion about leasing Wallace Avenue Gym and Sawyer Field.
I was approached a little while back by Coach Foster, uh, requesting to lease the Wallace Avenue Rec Center and Sawyer Field and concession building. And, um, I, she had a few things. I, I made that proposal to the rec committee. We discussed it. And I met with Coach Foster and Buck, Keith at the facility, kinda did a general walkthrough, which, uh, I need to get with Johnny and Dana on. Uh, there were just a few concerns, but she, what she would like to do, and I'm gonna let, I'm kinda throwing it to her to kinda, if you would, kinda explain what your plan and vision is for the rec center. Yes.
You can, come right on in.
This is Coach Foster.
Hi, y'all.
Hi, hello.
Uh, basically what my plan is, is right now I'm in the old gas house building on railroad tracks. And, uh, I started with two full-length cages, seventy foot by thirty foot, um, and then I have indoor turf. And I've got weight ring floor down, and then I have carts up that separate my part of the building from storage on the other end. Uh, and when I started, there was days when I was in that gym by myself. And, uh, we've been open for two years this July. I do lessons, uh, I do kid fitness, I do adult fitness. And, uh, basically, just, I really love, I'm, I was a teacher as well. Um, I just let my teaching job go in Georgia to be able to go full-time with Foster's and my foster family. Uh, but basically, what I would like to do, um, is take Sawyer Field, cut the grass off the infield, turn it into a nice field. I've already had a, a man come and look at it, get soil samples to see what kinda infield mix, mix needs to be used, what needs to be done to the outfield to get it nice. There's some bad grass that has briars and stuff that we don't want kids diving on. Um, I have a full summer plan, summer camp right now. Have speed and agility going on with twenty-plus kids I have in the gym that I'm at now, or the old gas house building. Uh, and, uh, so get that field looking nice. Um, I'm gonna have tryouts for a twelve U travel softball organization at the end of July. Um, as far as softball here, it used to be really strong. Um, you know, as far as rec, it kinda took a downhill turn. We had people start leaving and going to other places. Uh, and if you look at northeast Alabama when it comes to softball, we're one of the strongest places, period. Uh, and so there's no reason why we should have people going to Chattanooga, to Huntsville, to Birmingham to play. We shouldn't lose our local players. Uh, and basically I will give that option for people to stay here. Um, I wanna take one of the goals down in the gym, I'm gonna take one of the racquetball, uh, walls down and do an expanded weight ring coming out of the racquetball court. I'll turf a whole half of the gym floor with the turf I have, plus I'll add more onto it. There'll be two full-length cages pulled out at all times. Um, I have pitching, catching coach, hitting coaches, uh, for baseball and softball both. There'll be enough area to be able to do pitcher catcher work, also a home to second throwdown for catchers and infield work. The opposite half, the goal will stay. Um, I coach college basketball and softball. I play both, and so I do lessons and all those. Um, so I'll leave that one basketball goal up to where I'll have half court. Also, we do volleyball lessons. Um, kids that I used to coach now are with me, Latika Carter, she does my volleyball lessons. I coached her. Now she's coaching with me. Amanda Poe, I coached her. Now she's coaching with me. It's really cool to get to see that. Uh, and then there's volleyball net and a standard in there, so we can run it. If this is the basketball goal right here, we can put the volleyball net this way and have a whole volleyball court, just using half of it. Um, and so with the softball organization, uh, that I would like to start, it's Foster's Pride. Um, then what would happen is I've already had a ten U coach with all local players from DeKalb County, uh, Cherokee County that are on the team. He's already approached me, even though I don't have a twelve U team yet. I've just publicized having tryouts. He would like to come in to the organization and be underneath the umbrella of Foster's Pride, uh, to use Sawyer Field, if I do get to have that, you know, as a home practice field. Um, I don't know. I don't wanna just keep talking about what I think. I get excited and I'll just go, go, go. So I, do y'all have any, like, questions or... I don't know. I'm just pumped about it, 'cause we're, we're popping at the seams in our building that we're at now. And in parking, uh, that, the old green building right there that used to be Chick's Interior, um, well, that's my parking right now. And if someone were to rent that, I really have nowhere for anybody to park. Uh, and so we're just pretty much, you know, stuck everywhere. And if you come by last summer, I had what I call the blacktop basketball camp, because we had our basketball goals rolled out into the model parking lot, and we did our basketball camp there. So the fact that I could actually teach kids on a real basketball court has got me pretty pumped.
So you're gonna do basketball, softball, volleyball?
Baseball.
Baseball?
I do speed and agility, strength and conditioning, adult fitness, skate fitness. I, well, I actually, I do a soccer camp during the summer, uh, and I do basic skills, just with the little babies. Now, when you get into the stuff where you're gonna do a rainbow kick, you jump and shoot it in the head all over your head, I, I have no part in that. Now, I'm gonna tell ya.
I got a feeling you can find somebody that does, though.
That's exactly what I was about to tell you. I may have coached somebody who now is really doing soccer, and so I, I wouldn't mind at all.
How many employees do you have or gonna have or whatever?
Well, um, I mean, actual employees, I don't really have any. I have my foster family.
They're bottomed out.
Right. I mean, I, I have people that I've coached that are coming back in, uh, just like one person that I'm really excited about, Marissa Hancock. Uh, she just came in this summer. She finished at SNEE twenty home runs, signed at U N A. Uh, they just won Division Two National Championship softball and wanted me to get her in shape and, and get her hitting better, better than twenty home runs. So I was, you know, that was really a compliment to me. Uh, and so she comes in and, and does my workouts and I have her, you know, training. And then in return, she stays down there in the building and helps out with the kids and hitting and those kinda things. And the same way, you know, with some of my people who are young adults now, they may not have the kinda money to pay for a gym membership. So I get that. Hey, you know what? Come down here and help me out, and then you still come and work out.
Or will you continue to use it, uh, your existing building you're using now?
Right now I am, yes.
But even after you will go to Wallace Avenue?
Mm-mm. Everything will be moved over.
Sounds like a plan to me.
And we would need to have in the lease, Rocky, to make sure that she can make some adjustments to the building to suit her needs. Uh, the day that we met, there were a few things. She wanted to make sure that we have no leas naturally, 'cause she's about to spend five or six thousand dollars on artificial turf. Uh, she wants to remove the basketball goal on the north end of the gym completely. Uh, met with Buck about cutting out a bad section of the floor, replace the hardwood, secure the southeast corner from the basement, because we'd have to, um, retain the, the basement, of course, because that's where we use for all the...
So we need to, can we need to get together or how do we?
We are, yeah.
Okay. So you've already got sort of the lease framed out?
We met on this method. I tanked and I gave all the things to Andy and Andy's kinda...
Rocky's gotta talk y'all. He's gonna go over that list of things that you had requested.
It's pretty much just safety stuff, all the other stuff as far as cosmetics, keeping the building up, all of that. If you would've seen the building that I'm in now before we moved into it, uh, you can see the elbow grease and hard work goes a long way. And we will not shy away from that at all. It's just some of the stuff, there's a couple of places in the floor, like in the old racquetball court, where Peely Football Store, there's stuff, like he could fall through the floor in that corner. Uh, I don't really know if I could fix that. Now, I, I got people here that can. I got my foster family folks here that could do that, and, you know, different people. Uh, and then when you first walk in, it looks like part of it's falling down and the door to the bottom right, the only thing that's holding it closed right now is a screwdriver through a metal plane, so that makes me a little nervous. Uh, but, you know, it, it's just stuff like that. And then the light, there's only two rows of lights. And out of those two rows, well, there's four rows, but there's only two rows working right now, and there's about half of those. So when I start throwing balls at kids, I wanna make sure that they can see those. Um, but, yeah.
What do we need to look forward to?
Well, we're gonna, so just wanna make a motion and a second and vote to actually enter into the agreement. Let Rocky review the, review the lease and then Rocky and his foster can get together.
I, I don't think you need to do that till we have a final, uh, final document. But, you know, if, if everybody just says we wanna go forward informally, then we can try and get the lease ready and try to get it to where, uh, I think the goal is to be in by the first of August. We can try to get it, we can take a look at it. Y'all can go on it by the twenty-first.
So basically, now that we're here, it's a being operational.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, and that, that's what I would, I would like to be operational by August the first. Like, say for instance, you know, I, I've had people who could go ahead and start working now. Uh, but I wanted to make sure that it's something that I can do, like with the field, uh, with softball camps, with softball tryouts, all these things. It's all drafts.
Change the date to July first instead of August first.
He'd make it start anytime he want to. I guess if she had the lease, we could say she could, I mean, tha- that's not a problem. Is it a problem to wait two weeks to have it formally approved?
Rather not, but...
I, I just need to be able to get to work every day. That's what I need.
Approve it in, go ahead and prove it and then just authorize the mayor to go sign it when I check off on it and, and somebody from the rec committee checks off and get the mayor something.
We have a motion and a second.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye. And I, I think probably, if you guys wanted to, and I've watched some of this, uh, it's right down there by the hardware store. You could probably go buy and get a little bit of a sample workout. I'm sure she'd be happy to.
My kids kept it by their side.
Actually, we have a free workout every Saturday morning at eight o'clock. Anybody that shows up, ever since I've opened. Every morning, Saturday at eight o'clock.
My kids are doing the speed to doing the thing that you're doing right now.
Who?
Jack and Ellie.
Oh, Jack was textbook today on some form run against the law. It was phenomenal.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I had to brag on him. It was awesome.
What are your hours?
Uh, well, that's the, uh, funny thing. Um, like, right now, what I'm doing is I'm getting up there at about five-thirty in the morning. I do a six AM workout class. Uh, I have open gym from seven to eight, eight o'clock I do speed camp. Nine o'clock I do speed camp. Ten o'clock to twelve o'clock I'm doing lessons. Twelve to three, I shut down 'cause it's so hot. Three o'clock to six o'clock I do lessons, six o'clock adult fist, fitness, seven to eight lessons. And then I try to close at eight, because my son right there, he's my sidekick and he's with me. He, that's, that's the assistant coach right there. So, uh, he gets wore down, you know. But, and it, what I do is I post on, uh, Facebook and on Instagram the schedule change. Uh, and then also too, the foster family, any of the members, uh, that are with me, we have a message group. And so like today, I was like, hey, y'all, I had canceled my six o'clock class tonight, and I moved my lessons around. I was like, I got a meeting I gotta go to, so, um, I let all of them know.
Well, thank you for each that.
Awesome. Thank you.
And some of the things, you know, as you heard, Buck's been pretty busy, so, uh, we'll try to get in there to take care of some of these things as soon as we, we can.
Yeah, we'll look at it and...
I'm good. So does that mean I can start working over there now?
Pretty much.
Is that what that means? Awesome. Thank y'all very much. Thank you, thank you. You can shake your hands. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank y'all. Thank you so much. Eight o'clock in the morning. Sad, sad. Eight o'clock, eight o'clock.
I'll see you there, Rocky.
I tell you what, if you go ahead and start, I'll catch you.
It wouldn't take long for you to catch up. I'll tell you that right now.
Okay, just to move on, we, uh, that was one of the things I wanted to go over. We, we've held that, that facility for pickup basketball for a long time. We talked about that and, and we hadn't allowed anybody to use it because of that purpose. But what we did was we decided to, some money we would save, we would put in to maybe put an outside court. Um, and so there's some areas that I've talked to Tim about that we can actually use. There's vacant right now. We can put some basketball courts and, and future, maybe talk about even a, an official-sized basketball court where we can have some outside, uh, activities going on. So I, I want you guys to know that that's important too, to the recreation department that we pursue to put these courts up. So we do have some vacant lots that we can, while this is going out, that we're phasing this in also, so really people won't miss that, that pickup basketball. So, uh, we kinda agreed to do that too, just to let everybody know, just kinda go along with that.
Yeah, so we got a plan to be working on there.
Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay, consideration to amend the redevelopment project agreement with Second Street Plaza.
Uh, we entered into an agreement a while back with the Second Street Plaza. And as a result of that, they have refurbished the old Kmart building and opened three stores there. And I went in Dunham's last night for the first time. It is a nice facility. Uh, you don't anticipate everything, uh, that, that you might do, uh, when you draft these agreements. And, and they had all been based upon a Second Street either building or refurbishing the building and then leasing it and us receiving, or us, uh, making the payments we pledged to them out of the sales tax on the new businesses. We did not contemplate, uh, a business coming in there and building itself and wanting to purchase the land. And all this does, we, they have a, a business that wants to do that. And so this amends to where, uh, out of that business, those new sales taxes that are generated, uh, will be split and it'll reduce our obligation much quicker and obviously allow them to, uh, to recover much quicker. And hopefully what it'll also allow them to do is to continue to develop other portions of that property. Uh, and, and so we've amended it. We've advertised it as required, uh, the lawyer for Second Street Plaza and I and, and Tamara all agreed after looking at it that we weren't required to go through the, uh, weren't required to reinvent the wheel. We didn't have to go through the court process. We can just amend, amend the agreement. We've got, we're not even sure that the notice was necessary, but we just thought we'd do that out of the sense of caution. Uh, I've met over the amendment with Mr. Hill, who's the lawyer of Illinois, Alabama. Uh, they've made some changes at, at my request. And we, we've agreed to some changes they wanted. We've got the document. I'm ready to execute when, uh, when the council approves it. They'll move forward with their plans.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Red, second from Walter. All those in favor of them? Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Blavens to request the appropriation of seven hundred fifty dollars for Fort Payne High School fishing team.
This is something we, you're angling, I'm asking.
How many years is that?
This'll be the third year.
They did real well. I think you're best ever got.
Well, actually, we didn't win a lot of tournaments this year, but I have got, uh, just kinda give y'all a report. I've got one angler that is going to the Junior World Championship in August. It's gonna be hell on gones. So it's a local liking. I'm really expecting him to do well, maybe. And then we've got two anglers that in September will be going to, uh, can't remember the name of the liking, going to Kentucky, represent state Alabama in the Southeastern Division, TBF Championship. So, uh, we've had a good year, uh, fished several tournaments this year. This, this one that I usually come to y'all too in Ashram, it is, it's a, what they call the TBF World Finals. It's a four-day tournament and it's at Florida, Alabama. And, I mean, so we're putting the anglers, boat captains in motels and kinda helping with gas and food and stuff for, well, actually for about a week when we go fish things. Uh, my goal out of this, if I can keep a kid out of trouble, I, you know, I've done my part now. I've seen several of them and as much as I've got involved in it in the last few years, uh, I've seen some that's gone to college. They probably wouldn't have went to college if, if they hadn't been fishing. I had one, uh, last year that signed a four-year scholarship program. I think ten thousand dollars, but Tennessee at Bryan College. Uh, I'm quite proud of that. He's fishing on their team, doing, doing well. And I did get calls from, I've had calls from Kentucky, Tennessee, uh, looking for anglers. And college fishing and high school fishing is getting to be a, a big thing.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'll make a motion if we, uh, approve this appropriately.
Second.
And I also say thank you for what you do.
Yes.
I enjoy it.
Thanks.
Thank y'all.
You're gonna get in a whole lot of trouble when they're out on the water with a fishing pole in their hand, isn't it?
No. And they go to bed early too. They gotta get up and be there before daylight.
Okay. Second from Randall. All those in favor of the appropriation?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have a couple. Let's see. Curbing request, Dr. Martin Wilson, one ten twenty-third Street Northwest. Both of these approve. How many motions do we accept, both of them?
We've got one more that Tim just came to me to lay, that came in this afternoon, Phillip Haven, some car in the lake, which is up around the reservoir. And it meets all the specifications as well.
Okay, without them.
Motion.
All three.
Got all three?
Yes, sir.
Who was the motion? Motion from Walter, second from Johnny, that we approve all three. Curbing request. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Mayor.
Other than the personnel changes, which y'all got a list, uh, we would have quite a few this time. Resignation, terminations, hires, part-time, hires, full-time, what, and we, and we're still short help. Uh, there was some concern about the truck stop that was being built out here on Highway thirty-five about the lighting that they would use. Because once they put that in, we'll end up paying for it. So I got with, uh, Mr. Camp and he assured me that it will be LED Cobra headlights. So that'll, that'll cut that bill by about eighty percent. So. Uh, I think everything else that we've talked about, uh, pretty well covers what I have.
That's it for the regular reading. Uh, got a lot of folks. I heard somebody from y'all that's having something they'd like to say? Yes, sir.
Last one. My wife and I had a chance to vacation out west. And we visited two cities that had some crossing issues. And they, they have flags that they use for crossing. And it's just struck me that this might be, uh, something that could be a possible solution to the crossing problem at the Scram Theater. What it is, they had mounts on the flag, or on the, uh, streetlights. And they had flags in them so that when anybody wanted to cross the street, they would just grab a flag and hold it on front of them as they crossed the street.
I saw it last year.
And, uh, we ju, we just saw that and, uh, you know, thought it might be something that, uh, you might take a look at and, uh, consider as a possibility.
Well, that would be easy. That'd be neat, but.
Well, you were trying to get the camera on. It works out good if somebody takes the flag out and they'll put that.
There'd be some souvenirs taken on through.
No, I think the one thing I would, I would suggest, you know, if this is something you're going to do, that you would put some kind of a placard on the pole that says, you know, please be careful when you use these, you know, because it's not a.
It's one way, it's another way. Yeah.
But we had talked with the states, you know, about going with the flashing lights and what have you. And, and they made a proposal which, uh, we didn't think we liked, but it turned out that's probably the best one. Uh, I saw one set up somewhere just recently and it's, it really, it works. I mean, you can see it. You can't. Uh, it's using a bar. Uh, it's using solar cells to, to power it and wireless. So it's just push button, easy place. Uh, Tim, do you remember what that price was on that system?
It was forty-eight hundred, I think.
Forty-eight hundred dollars. So we haven't done anything. We just kind of.
Yeah, they're not gonna approve that, is there, obviously?
No, they won't. They, they're not gonna go along with what we want you to do.
Yeah, they're okay. They'll like. Nine thousand or fifty-five hundred dollars.
So if that be the case, I'd like to go ahead and do that. Well, we have, we were undetermined about what we really wanted.
We approved an amount, a two in amount to go with it when you figured out what you wanted.
Be all right. Okay. Good thing. We'll see about getting that done now.
Get her done. Get her done.
Thank you for that suggestion. We'll definitely, we'll, is there anybody else?
Yes, we'd like to get a work session with the council with two of the thirty-eight, thirty-seven, thirty-eight street community. We'd like to talk to you about a man or so in the wilderness state that way it was and do some discussing on that, if you'd please.
Okay, but that's kind of what we were just talking about. We didn't even set a work session on that. Uh, we've had a little bit of a hard time trying to get everybody to be together. I was out of town last week and Dr. was out of town. So y'all want to just go ahead and try to set one tonight? Okay. Let's see, we already had one for the twenty-first now. Let's see, where we go.
Late afternoon, we'd be.
Yeah, it would be better.
We'll, we'll meet anytime, once the question you got.
July fifth will be the next, I'm ready.
Well, we don't necessarily have to do it before camp.
That's right.
What about, what about next Tuesday?
I, I can't be here on, I've got courts on, I've got a court on that Tuesday. I gotta be in. Well, I mean, if you just talk, what are you talking about, weight limits?
Uh, no, just in general, I think.
Well, if I was, well, if that's court, what else do I want to give to them?
Okay, I mean, you need me here.
I would prefer you.
I could be here by, normally I get through about five o'clock and five and a half. I could be back here by hour below. Takes a drive.
What about Thursday?
Any Thursday this month, yeah, be fine, I think. Except, except this Thursday.
What about the twenty-third or sixteenth?
Twenty-third I'll be in, I've got to be at the state bar meeting.
What's the?
This coming movie.
That's Tuesday.
What was wrong with the second, the Tuesday? I mean, the fourteenth.
I can be here by.
The twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Looks like it's gonna be the twenty-eighth, doesn't it? Twenty-eighth?
I could do it on Monday, the twenty.
Sound good?
Yeah, what time?
Five o'clock.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, go on. Monday, June twentieth at five o'clock. If you can kind of make sure you pass the word around to folks up there and I've got a few that I'll contact also.
June twentieth, five o'clock.